All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start the meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please make take roll call?
Yes, council members, just a reminder to state your city, township, county, or county, as well as the state where you reside or where you're located right now. Dave Abdullah.
Here Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Bill Bazzi.
Here Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Robert Coniston.
Here Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here Pinkney Livingston County, Michigan.
Ray Muscat.
Here Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Before we move on, I'd like to say this week, we lost a great guy, Wayne County Sheriff Benny Napoleon. He died at the young age of sixty-five and was survived by his daughter Tiffany Jackson. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for this gentleman.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please be seated. At this time, I'd like to read something. Dear council members, on Monday, December seventh, two thousand and twenty, we had the pleasure of meeting the prospective city council candidates to fill the on-expired term of City Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. At this time, I'm requesting your honorable body to nominate all of the candidates that were interviewed. That would include Zuhair Abdal-Hak, Moby Dune, Nancy Brier, and William Toby Zeranko.
So moved. Let's support.
Bye. Okay, and Councilman Bazzy.
I don't know who keeps muting me, so.
He just has to be unmuted. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on the different council people, and at this time, you will tell me who you are supporting in the nomination. I have Councilman Muscat.
I nominate Zuhair Abdal-Hak.
Councilman Coniston.
I nominate Moby Dune.
Councilman Bazzy.
I nominate Mr. Zuhair Abdal-Hak.
Council Chair Malinowski Maxwell, Moby Dune. Councilman Abdullah.
I nominate Moby Dune.
Councilman Wenzel.
I nominate Abdul-Hak.
We do have a tie. I will go through one more time. If we tie, then we will wait till the next meeting. We have Councilman Muscat.
Zuhair Abdal-Hak.
Councilman Coniston.
Moby Dune.
Councilman Bazzy.
Mr. Abdal-Hak.
Council Chair Malinowski Maxwell, Moby Dune. Councilman Abdullah.
Moby Dune.
Councilman Wenzel.
Zuhair Abdal-Hak.
If I, we will have to wait till the next meeting. At this time, I move that we go into a closed study session, which means we will be putting everybody in the audience into the waiting room, and when we are done, we will bring you back into the meeting. I need to have a motion and a support before we can do so.
I move that we go into closed session.
Moved by Councilman Coniston, supported by Councilman Muscat. At this time, people in the audience, we will be putting you into the waiting room, and we will pull you right back out as soon as we're done. Okay, let's move to come out of the close study session and in back into the open session.
I move that we go out of closed session and back into open session.
For.
For my Councilman Coniston, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are back in our regular meeting. At this time.
Go ahead.
I'm going to go to the agenda. Well, okay, go ahead, Council. I'm Councilman Coniston.
I move that we follow the advice of our attorneys as previously discussed.
Councilman Bazzy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay. Council Chair, I think the counselor asked that we would say what it was that he wanted us to say.
No.
Just.
I had it written down. Don't.
To take the advice on the pending.
Pending litigation.
Nothing specifically. Nothing specifically, but what's happening.
We take the advice on the pending matters for both matters that were discussed.
Three a.
Favor, I'm supported by Councilman Bazzy still.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's move on and begin the rest of the meeting. Next, we have approval of the minutes. This is the minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of December eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the meetings from the electronically held regular meeting of December eighth, two thousand and twenty be approved.
Support.
Or, I'm sorry, who was support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Okay, although, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. This is items currently on the agenda today. You have two minutes. You need to state your name, street, city, county, and state. Anyone have any comments on public agenda items? I don't see any. Okay, next item is fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move City Council approve fund transfers and current claims six, one through six thirty-seven as outlined in six, item six.
Support.
For my Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
I'm sure.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question on six, three. This is for our Director, John Sellme. And the question I had on that one is some bills are pretty old. Do you know why we're getting bills from back in August? Right now, I mean, as far as I knew off the top of my head, at least, we're all up to date. That's one. And then, two, why are we getting bills from August right now from artistic, I believe it was?
Brett Frasami, did you want to respond to that?
Yes, sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's a good question, but he just sent all his bills. I reached out to him, and he had not sent bills all summer, so these were his bills for, under the new contract, which are greatly reduced rate.
And they were the exact amount for every single month, four thousand dollars. That is correct?
Yeah, per the new new contract that when we went out to bid, that was the price.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I had another, Council Chair had another one.
For who?
This is for on six twenty-five. Trying to pull it up here. I hate these electronic ones here. I'm almost by there. Just give me two seconds. There's too much attachments to it. Okay, on six twenty-five, this is the one in regards to this would be for Christie Lazlos. Actually, this would be more for the mayor slash Christie Lazlo. This particular one's for the legal services and expenses. Sequest, Ward, Lynch, Hampton, Brooks, and Morley. How long are we going to keep going on with this thing? And what is the current status as far as from a mayor's end, as far as bringing us another options, other options as far as the council is concerned? Because I'm really starting to get very, very concerned about the fact that we have no attorney helping us out on this stuff on a regular basis today.
Well, if I can. Yeah, if I can respond, that's what my lawsuit is about, directed at the councils to have the judge decide where we are on these lawyer situation, because I, I, I don't know what to tell you.
Well, but at the same time, Mr. Mayor, we ask to, you know, for administration, yourself included, obviously, to bring forward, you know, different attorneys that are going to be options for us. And I personally, I could speak for myself, I have no problem with Gary Miatki being included in this, but let's see what options we have available so we can make a decision. At this particular point, we've been brought forward no options. It's been about two to three months so far since he's not been on, and he may be in the meetings, but we're not getting any type of advice from him. And previous to that, obviously, that was also controversial, whether he was our attorney or not. So now we're going on almost a year, and we still don't have forward to, personally, I'd like to see to be able to make a choice, two or three firms at the minimum, to be able to make a choice as to who's going to be our best attorney going forward. And that includes Gary Miatki. I have no problem with that personally. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but to continue going with this thing with not paying the bills for the attorneys, not bringing forward new attorneys, and we just keep going on and on and on. This thing is just stretching forever with, with a tightrope being pulled back and forth between the council and yourself. But at the end of the day, for our residents, nothing's getting accomplished. And we have right now, as we speak today, if there was a legal matter, I'd have to ask, you know, maybe our, our city councilman, Robert Coniston, a question, because he's the only attorney we have available to us. So I think we ought to have some sort of movement forward on this, maybe have a study session on this, maybe sit down and negotiate, us and you, but let's bring something forward. We got to do something about this. We can't keep going on like this. Not to mention, it's not fair for them that I've been paid as of yet either, at the same time. Thank you.
Well, let me make this clear. If you look at the charter, I do not bring five candidates and you select. The mayor selects the attorney, not the city council. And I'm prepared to bring another name, but I have, I filed in suit in circuit court. The judge said in early January, she would hear the lawsuit. And that deals with the item, because so many times, the council has sat there and said, well, Gary will still serve until we find a new pick, until the COVID's over, I'm in doubt. But I don't want to talk about the litigation at the council meeting.
No, I respect it, but Mr. Mayor.
It's not a good time, Councilman, to discuss it here. It is in litigation.
I disagree, because this thing is going to keep going on and on and on and on and on with no attorney for any of us. And when Gary's name was brought forward, I realize what the charter says. Gary's name was brought forward, it was not seconded. So all we're saying is for you, Mr. Mayor, to bring us somebody forward so we could decide yes or no. At this point, if we continue going with the lawsuits, and this gets stretched out for another year, we have another year with no attorney to be able to give us advice. And as we've seen, without getting into details, that can put us in a bad situation, unfortunately, and a costly situation for that matter. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Muscat.
I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Dave Abdullah. This has gone on too far, too long, and it's costing everybody more money. And yes, the mayor does pick with our concurrence, but the mayor also has to follow our direction, and we directed him to bring other names, and that hasn't happened. And then COVID got blamed. But again, I'm going to go back to the fact that the mayor goes out to eat all the time. He's been at restaurants. He's been every place. He's had photo shoots in his office. So we can still zoom. He still can zoom to gather people's, other attorney firms. Okay, so let's not just, we, we can drop this here because of litigation. The fact of the matter is, he's correct, but also the charter tells, tells the mayor, he has to follow our direction, and we directed him to bring us new names. So are we both wrong? But that's my, my statement. But I agree with Councilman Dave Abdullah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids. This is a C E D D Director Hashem Review of Bid Award for your two thousand and nineteen C D B G demolition program for five nine five two Kingston and two zero seven five one Powers and two five six five nine Annapolis Demolition Project.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move, we concur with our Economic Development Director, Joe Hashem, and accept the lowest bidder for the C D B G demolition project for the property on Kingston Powers in Annapolis as outlined in seven a.
Support.
For my Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman, okay, please raise your hands in the Zoom.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Councilman Muscat.
You know, we spoke about this problem with, with the companies out there and the problem we had with the last, last demolition. I don't understand why we just don't go out and rebid and make sure that the best bid specifications have that the company must be certified by the state through the EPA to get it done. That way, it solves all the issues, because these companies are not certified by the EPA. And once, you know, we know these homes are old. We know they've got asbestos in it. We know they've got lead paint in them. So why don't we just send out the bid specs to include they need to be certified by the EPA? That's my recommendation.
Director Hashem, did you want to respond to that? I'm looking.
We've done this.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good evening, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman, all I'm asking for is to put the reasoning why you did not pick the lowest bidder. You can pick whoever you want, whatever company, but you have to put it in the motion. This is direction from HUD. If you don't give me a reason why you did not pick the lowest bid, then I cannot pay this from federal funds. That's all I'm asking for. Whatever the reason is, we picked the third lowest bidder, not the first, not the second, and not the third. We, and we got to the, I'm sorry, we picked number, we skipped number one, the lowest one, we skipped the number two, and then we picked number three. And I have no reason to give in my report why we skipped two companies to get to the third company. That is all I'm asking for, is a reasonable answer. That's all.
I, I, I agree with you, but again, if we go out to rebid and we put the bid specifications in that they need to be EPA certified, that will eliminate all the problems. We, we can get rid of this and, and just rebid, and you could tell the HUD, that's what we're going to do. We want to find someone who's EPA certified. Okay, that's the big concern of the neighborhood and members of the city council. We, we've gone through this with problem after problem after problem, and I think that would solve it. Now, that's just my opinion. We got other council people here that may think differently.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazzy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also, I'm concurring with Councilman Muscat, you know, I mean, my opinion is to, we can amend this motion to, to choose the, what is it, Thomas Trucking Services, which is nine hundred and ninety dollar difference, and those are, that company is authorized by the state. And again, you know, in the future, you know, when we put those bids out, you know, we should put something that this company has to be certified, obviously, because you got to prevent from somebody renting a bulldozer, doing what was done before, just do a demolition with a water tank, spray water on a house while there's dust and everything is in the air. And, you know, we, we saw pictures of that, you know, some residents did send us pictures for the last demolition that was done. So we got to try to prevent that from happening. By doing that, we have to choose the right company that is certified by the state, and they know the protocol. So my recommendation, again, is to amend the motion to choose the number two company, which is Thomas Trucking Services for thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and that company is certified by the state. And again, it's, there's only nine hundred and ninety dollar difference.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead, Director Hashem.
That's fine. This is the council's decision. They can pick whoever they want. However, I still need an explanation in the motion why the first bid was not taken. That's all. You can pick, again, you can pick number two, number three, number ten, but you have to put in the motion why you chose to skip number one. That's all.
Councilman Bazzy, would you like to do that?
I can, I can, I mean, the Councilman Coniston made the motion, but if he wants, I can make the motion.
I can amend the motion. I, McMillan's done work for us before. I don't know that the state certification has anything to do with any EPA certification. I'm, I live closest to the site where the work was done and familiar with those homes, but the, the certification with the state is, is that?
That's not a requirement.
Madam, Madam Chair, okay, so it's, it's, okay, I make a motion, I mean, I amend the motion to choose Thomas Trucking Company the bid for thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And with the motion, reason why is because of the residents in the last few demolitions that we had by the previous companies with the complaints that the way they were demolished was not to where it's supposed to be. And again, I don't want to bash a company, but that's pretty much my, my motion, but I can discuss that in.
I'll support that motion.
Is supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
You know, I spoke with Director Hashem. Sorry, I want to make sure we're clear on this. One of the issues that he's got with this, he had no problem with which particular company we choose. It is up to us. The challenge was if we don't say why we didn't choose the lowest bidder in this particular case, or in the last particular case, we didn't pick the lowest or the second lowest, then what happens? The money comes out of the general fund, and he's trying to make sure that we don't do that. We don't pay it out of our own funds. So I think that we may have to amend the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Hashem, to say why specifically we're not picking McMillan Group, because I think in your, in your motion, Councilman Bazzy, I think you just said we didn't pick other companies, but I think you guys picked why the lowest bidder, McMillan Group, was not selected. And then you wanted to pick which one.
I think he did, Councilman.
Yes. Yeah.
I think he did when he said that they, we had problems with them.
He didn't name them. I'm saying he didn't name them. I'm just trying to make sure we're following technicalities, so it doesn't come out of our general fund, number one. And number two, I don't want this to be technically incorrect, again, like we're having to do right now, two weeks later, and then come back all over again, another two weeks later. Meanwhile, the residents are starting to have to deal with homes that are not that well kept next door to them. So I'm just trying to get, make sure is, let's follow the director's technicalities, so this is done properly. That's all I'm saying. This is no reflection.
Before we go any further, our Madam Clerk has got some questions. We need to address her. Go ahead, please.
Director Hashem, maybe you can help me on this one. But I'm looking at your correspondence, and I apologize, don't have the council motion, you know, that came from our office on here. But that bid was already awarded to somebody. So I think that has to be rescinded, because you're awarding this bid again to someone else.
Who was it awarded to?
I believe Inner City.
Yes.
I'm, I'm looking at Director Hashem's letter, and it says, yeah, it looks like Inner City. So they've already received the motion saying that it was awarded to them.
Yes. Madam Chair. I have, I have not reached out to Inner City and let them know that they are the winners in this, in this particular case.
But they would have received a count, the copy of the council motion because they were mentioned in the council motion.
Yes, and they were carbon copied on that one as well. However, if we do go with them without an explanation of why we skipped two ahead of them, then the city will end up paying this money instead of the federal funds. That's all.
Yeah, I know.
If you want to rescind it, that's fine. You want to rebid it, that's fine. You want to pick another company, that's fine. But hearsay is not a reason. We can't say because somebody saw dust. Who saw the dust? Where's the picture? You just got to put something for me to fall back on and protect myself, so the city doesn't end up paying this money out of their pocket. That's why I'm trying to basically protect myself, protect my department, and make sure that the money does come from the grant and not from the general fund. I don't know how, why that's not clear. It's very clear. I did send an email yesterday or the day before. I explained exactly what I want. It's very clear on the motion that I have on, on the letter that I sent, either to give me an excuse, and hearsay is not an excuse. The HUD is not going to say, oh, a neighbor saw dust. There's always dust when there's a demolition. I need a reason that I can sell, put it on my file, so when they audit me, I can have them, give them the motion, say, here's the motion from city council. That's all. It's not complicated.
This time, does any of the councilmen have pictures of this incident? I think, Tom, you did, didn't you? And Councilman Wenzel.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I did have some, but I'd have to look them up. But can't, can't we just say because of continued concerns or issues with the pre, the first and second lowest bidders, we had, we decided to go with the third bidder? Do we have to be specific? You know, can't we just say we had continuous, continued problems with the, the lowest and second most bidder?
Councilman Chair, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Director Hashem.
Councilman, if you want to do that, that's fine with me, but you can't just say because somebody saw dust. It's got to be a reason. I mean, I didn't have a problem with them when they did the Joe Road property. I have a complete file certified by the state saying they did the job properly. Again, I was not involved in the houses you're talking about. I'm talking about my personal experience with Inner City that did work for us and McMillan that did work for us in the past. Both files are present in the office, and I did offer for anybody to come and look at it. State came down, there was no asbestos in the air, there was no lead flying in the air, there was dust. That's going to happen, which company, whichever company you pick. Again, do what you please, and I'll follow your lead.
Madam Chair.
Um, Councilman Coniston, please raise your hand in the future if you want to be acknowledged.
I did. I, I used the raise.
Oh, yes, you did. Okay, go ahead, please.
Well, I know the homeowners all along there, and, and there was never any concern about any asbestos or asbestos dust. This, the lowest bidder is the lowest bidder, and the certification that some are talking about is not a EPA certification. I don't know that there is such a thing. Those were newer homes. Those, those homes, those tri-level homes didn't have asbestos around the furnace. One of the homeowners was Troy Brown, or there was no asbestos in his house.
Those, those homes were built before nineteen sixty-five.
Point order, Councilman Bazzy.
Okay, so we can do two things. You know, we, we can resend the previous motion with Inner City. So we can make another motion, if it's okay, to resend that motion, and make another motion to, to choose the second bidder, which is Thomas Trucking Service for thirty thousand eight ninety-eight. So that's a difference of nine hundred and ninety dollars roughly, roughly. And again, you know, this, we went through this before, and we, we brought it up, and we had concerns, you know, there was pictures, you know, we showed, and just the process. Again, we don't want to re, go back and just hash, you know, bring out all the concerns that we had in the past about this company. But obviously, a company went in, they said there was asbestos and lead, and the next step is the house was demolished, but there was not, we, we never saw any reports of abatement, nothing. So again, you know, to prevent this, that's why we chose a company that was certified by the state. So the state has a website, obviously, and it says each company is certified to do abatement. So again, you know, what's going to prevent from somebody renting a bulldozer to do the same thing, and they can bulldoze a house with a water tank, you spray water on it. That's not the right way to do it. That's why they have regulations. And again, so we have to, we can resend the motion. I recommend to resend the motion, and to make another motion, we're just wasting time on this, and it's only a difference of nine hundred and ninety dollars in choosing a company that's certified by the state.
There was testing done out there. There was no contamination.
Never saw.
Let's, let's, let's move forward. We're taking too long on this item. Let's get it rescinded and make a motion for the new company. Go ahead.
Council Chair.
Council Muscat.
I move that city council rescind the first bid and move on and award the bid to Thomas Trucking Services for thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars as outlined in seven a.
Support.
Councilman Bazzy, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
We, we, we're still not following the rules. I'm, I'm being tactical, but based on what Joe said, this is not going to work. We have to say why we're not picking the first bidder, the lowest bidder. We have to specify.
Let, let, let me amend that, then.
Go ahead.
I move that city council rescind the first bid, award the, award the bid to Thomas Trucking Services in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars because of problems arising with, with, with community this, not believing in what's going on with the McMillan Group and lack of faith in how they do their cleanup. Uh, not, not believing in what's going on with the McMillan Group and lack of faith in how they do their cleanup. I don't know what else to say. Nobody liked the way they did their job. Okay, we did have, I don't know where Mr. Coniston figures, we didn't have any complaints. My phone rang off the hook.
No, I'm saying about contamination.
Wait a minute, we have a motion on the floor. We have Councilman Abdullah, you were supporting it. And please be recognized before we start speaking out of order. There's a hand you need to raise. Okay, is there any discuss, further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under reports from city officials, C E D D Director Hashem. P Y two thousand nineteen C D B G C V three action plan amendment adoption. Bella.
I move that we concur with C E D D Director Joe Hashem, who is recommending that the city council approve the CARES Act. P Y two thousand nineteen C D B G C V three action plan amendment. In addition, uh, our director, Joe Hashem recommends that city council authorize the mayor to sign the certifications. S F dash four two four application and S F four two four D assurances. And C E D D will submit all documents to HUD on or after December twenty-three, two thousand twenty as outlined in item nine A.
Support.
For my Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Um, I'd like to get clarification. On page two, it says, uh, project name, planning and administration. For sixty-four thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars. It says national objectives, L M I, limited clientele. What is limited clientele?
Uh, Director Hashem, would you like to answer that?
Madam Chair, uh, the money that we have to spend from this, this is a new grant for three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. It's broken down, limited clientele. First of all, we have. Uh, limited clientele will be, uh, seniors, senior, uh, members of the, of our community. That's a. Uh, uh, limited clientele, uh, people that qualify from an income perspective will be limited clientele as well. So it's for people that show us their income and they qualify from that perspective, or they are seniors.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, so under project, you have senior citizens P P E distribution. So you have an amount there. And you have an amount, obviously for COVID, you have an amount for, uh, for homeless. And I just want to make sure that limited clientele, you know, just want it to be specific as to. It should stay, if it's seniors, and I'd like for it to stay seniors. So we know what it is, you know, other than just leaving a vague, a limited clientele.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Director Hashem.
Um, the whole package does talk about what limited clientele is probably on page. Uh, one, actually, in my backup, project name is Senior Citizen P P E Distribution. So this is a code that we use, limited clientele. This is, uh, with regard to me talking to the administration, specifically the mayor. And Director Hadad from the, from the senior centers and Parks and Recreation. This is to buy equipment for our seniors in the city of Dearborn Heights, whether it be hand sanitizers, gloves, uh, wipeys, or whatever they need. And Parks and Recreation hopefully will help us out distribute that. Actually, Brian, Dr. Had, uh, Director Hadad was very positive with respect to this. And thanks to the mayor for bringing that up to me, to help our seniors.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's just.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Of course.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, just want to point out, although we have a superstar. Um, a grant writer in our fire department and she does absolutely unbelievable job, but I just want to recognize that. We've gotten over two and a half million dollars in grants, uh, by our director, Joe Hashem. And Chris in that department. So I just want to recognize them, say, good job for all the money that they're bringing into the city.
Thank you, Councilman.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have D P W Director Salmy. Permission to purchase building and maintenance department equipment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve, uh, the purchase of one K C one thirty-two series replacement van body. An amount of eighteen thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-three cents as outlined in nine B.
Support.
For my Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Director Salmy. Um, I know this was not a part of our budget and I know you're asking for this and I would support this type of stuff, but I just want to know the why part. Um, is there one that's gone bad or is this starting from scratch? What, what's the current situation on the, as to why you need this?
Oh, this, this, I have some money in the capital outlay budget and the building and maintenance. This is a utility vehicle that they use to work on the vehicles or the buildings, I'm sorry. And, uh, last year we replaced the box on one of the other trucks. This box is starting to rust out also, so. To be proactive, it takes about four to six months to get this completed, so.
But it's so basically, it's almost useless and you're just getting another one, correct?
Yeah, we're cabin chassis is fine. We're just replacing the utility box that mounts to the cabin, cabin chassis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, uh, Director Salmy, wouldn't it, would, would it, would it be advantageous to go with the, the, this stainless steel? Um, or aluminum boxes?
Um, this, this is not like a dump truck. This is a more like a utility type truck, like you would see D T or somebody like that use, so. Um, we didn't price out those, uh, materials, but you know, this truck is, I think it's a two thousand fifteen or sixteen, so. Um, seemed like a good investment.
And there's no other material, aluminum would be an option on something like that? That's something that typically happens, uh. Rusty, that bad on these things after a couple of, or four or five years?
Yeah, there, there, there could be. I mean, the, you know, the cost is going to be much more. Um, maybe in the future when the city decides to spec out a new vehicle. And then they go that route with, you know, that configuration as an option.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers' request for approval, agreement with Spectrum Training Solutions LLC.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move, we concur with our police chief, uh, Mark Myers and approve the, uh. Entering into an agreement with Spectrum Solutions, uh, for the training, uh, is outlined in nine C. Support paid for from state training funds.
Support.
For my Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, for our police chief, nice sweater, by the way.
It's llama season. I just want everybody to know it is llama season.
Oh, all right, all right.
Teen season.
So i- is this, is this, uh, chief new training that we are starting with? Or is this something that's been continuously going on on a yearly basis? Because without getting into the details as to some other, you know, police departments. They've had, you know, unfortunately, some challenges. Is that the reason this came about or is this something that's been done yearly?
So, yes, to all those questions. Yes, that we've trained, but yes, we're trying to do better at everything we do. We're in a constant state of improvement. Anything that we can do to add to the body of knowledge that our law enforcement can receive to better serve the citizens here, we're going to do. Um, one of it is, uh, mental health training and that's what this is. So this is dealing with people with autism, mental illness, uh, anxiety, anything to make us better police officers. Um, what you're seeing with this one is this is the first time that all of our members, our unions have agreed to a forty-hour training block. Where we're going to have dedicated hours of training and this is one of the blocks within that forty hours. So our unions, our members, our administration at the city and now hopefully through you, recognize the need for high-quality training. And this is all of us moving towards that. And you'll see coming in future meetings, additional trainings that we're looking for to build this forty-hour block. And obviously it costs money, but that's why we have training money and I bring it in front of council.
Okay, I love it and fully support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Tiff Administrator Roscoe reintroduce Van Born Corridor Improvement Overlay District Professional Services Proposal.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Tom Roscoe, the Tiff Administrator. Uh, who has brought forward to us, uh, meeting that was discussed and the next step in the ongoing Van Born Road Corridor Revitalization Project. Which needed an overlay zoning district and he is, Dearborn Heights Tiff Board has approved our Tiff to cover half of the cost of eighty-seven hundred dollars. For Dearborn Heights, half seventeen thousand four hundred dollars of the weight trim proposal, thirty-four thousand eight hundred. And as a member of the Van Born Corridor Project Steering Committee, he's asking that we reintroduce weight trim's proposal for consideration by the council. And encourages us to approval, which would request that weight trim make every effort to complete the work within a hundred and eighty days. And, uh, avoiding unforeseen circumstances. But do the best to request to strive to complete the phase of the project within a hundred and eighty days. Seems reasonable. This is as outlined in item nine D.
For my Councilman Wenzel, is there any discussion?
It's a good use of Tiffa money.
Councilman Abdullah.
Uh, you know, I, I, I like the fact that, you know, we're putting at least some parameters as far as time is concerned. But I'm also at the same time still very, very concerned that this project started a while back. And we're still dealing with this and we're still dealing with this and we're still dealing with this. And then at the end, I'll, I look at, I look at results. At the end, visually looking at it, driving through Van Born, I see nothing that started. I'm hoping and praying. And this may come out offensive. I don't mean it that way, but I hope we're not get, just getting lip service from our city, from the city across from us and from all the administrators. I hope and pray that we are all over the thing and I hope and pray that we don't stretch the hundred and eighty days. And try to get this thing done ASAP where people can start to at least see some visual changes instead of just meetings and paperwork, meetings and paperwork. And money going out and no visual differences. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under new business, we have business license renewal for Liver Noise Motorsports and Engineering located at two five zero zero South, South Gully.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we approve the renewal of the business license for Liver Noise Motorsports and Engineering. At two five zero zero South Gully in Dearborn Heights as outlined in item, uh, thirteen A.
Support.
For my Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have comments from council members. Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, first of all, I'd like to wish everyone a, uh, Merry Christmas and a, uh. Enjoy the celebrations of the, all the ethnic celebrations going on this time of year. And with the year coming to an end, uh, this is a year unlike any other year in the past. There's so many unfortunate things happening, some good things have happened. Um, we've learned a lot. And, uh, this coming year, I personally have some goals and, uh, a few of them are the, uh. Return to city hall and the all-city, uh, all-city offices and, uh, and departments to a five-day work week. And really like, uh, Councilman Abdullah stated, uh, the Van Born Road project. Uh, go forward with, with, with both feet, hundred percent to show some progress. Uh, to show the citizens that we're serious about this and that we're not just, as Councilman Abdullah said, giving them lip service. Uh, I really want to address this flooding issue and we, it, we don't time, that seems like the only time we talk about it is during a flood. Uh, two weeks later, there's nothing said about it. This should be something that's brought up, uh, progress reports every meeting. The residents deserve this. Um, I personally, as many other council members do, would want a charter review. I think that's something we should definitely look into in twenty twenty-one. And have an action plan for emergency situations like we did with the COVID. Uh, instead of just winging it. I know we've learned a lot, so I think we should come up with some kind of sort of like a master plan in the si, the situation. The city's done a fairly good job under the circumstances, not knowing what to do, not, not, not having any precedence in the situation. Uh, I'd like to, uh, address all the traffic issues we have with, uh, around the schools in the Dearborn Heights area. And, uh, lastly, uh, is we, we should come up with a grant writing committee or staff. Something like that, because these grants are so important and we have so many issues on with the city where we could probably get money. And we just, we just don't ha, write the grants in time or the, not the right way. So we, we've got the expertise in grant writing. I think we should have a department. Basically, a grant writing department. I think it'd be well worth it. They could pay for themselves easily. Thank you. Everybody have a happy holiday, Merry Christmas.
Bazey.
And also, uh, I guess a couple of things. I want to wish everybody happy holidays and a happy new year. And hopefully the new year will bring everyone, uh, a better year than twenty twenty, be a safer year and hopefully we can contain COVID. And, uh, uh, the second thing I wanted to bring up, Madam Chair, is you mentioned at the last, uh, meeting that you were threatened. Uh, prior to the vote, you know, for an appointment of a new, uh, council member. Uh, we, we were also, you were also quoted in the news article saying that you, you had been threatened and bullied by a council member. And that you received a lot of calls, texts, emails, uh, you know, again stating that you were threatened and bullied. Um, you know, how, however, you didn't specify who this council member is. I received, uh, multiple calls from residents inquiring, inquiring which one of us threatened you. Uh, this statement is very alarming to me and others since, uh, no one on the council should be threatened or bullied into any decision. Um, I'm also concerned that this statement could implicate anybody or any of us on the council. Because you did not really specify who it is, uh, nor did we see or hear, uh, that, see the messages. Uh, since I am among the four of other council members, um, and, uh, you, uh, that have been questioned, you know, by, uh, the residents. I would like to clarify that I am not, uh, I did not threaten or bully you, nor am I aware of, uh, what you're referring to. You know, in fact, I'm sure you can recall, you know, uh, you know, the last, you know, three years we've been on the council. When you told me, uh, that you were being followed and that someone from the administration was parking outside your house, watching you. And during that time, you know, I would, you know, some of us mess up. I know, uh, Councilman, uh, Muscat will walk you out to your car, you know. And after, after a council meeting, you know, we were talking on the phone till you got home and we made sure that you were home safe. You know, I guess at this time, you know, it, it is a alarming nature, you know, the statement that you made that you're being threatened by a council member. The fact that I received multiple calls, you know, from concerned citizens and also in fairness to us five council members. I, I kindly ask you, you know, to clarify your statement, please.
I, you need to go back and listen to it. I never said it was a council man. And I will tell you that right now. I just looked back on my notes. I have them right here. There's nothing. I read from those notes. There's nothing about a councilman, so you're misquoting me unfortunately. Um, it, that is not correct.
Okay, even in a, so the paper is incorrect also, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Councilman Abdullah.
Um, so, I mean, my comment was in regards to something else, uh, but I'll, I also had people ask me, you know, which councilman said this, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, just for full clarification, I did not threaten you or anybody else. Never will be my style. So I did not do that. So if it was a res, if it was not a council person, I think it should be clarified that. Uh, at the very minimal, it was a resident and if it's a resident speaking to one of the council people, me, you or anybody else, they have a right to speak to us. As long as it's in a way where it's not threatening. So any types of threats from a resident or a council person, of course, is not acceptable. But for full clarification, I did not send a type of threats your way or any other council.
Well, I just clarified what I said, so I really, we don't need to keep, I'm not going to comment any further on it, Bill. I will not. Purposes, I will not.
Um, I, I, on a, uh, much more positive note, uh, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas. And hope and pray for all of us that we have a much better and healthier year in two thousand twenty-one plus. And I'd like to, uh, just acknowledge all the first responders, our first responders, our police. And I'd like to just acknowledge all the first responders, our first responders, our police and fire. I know they put their lives on the line for all of us and just want to tell you guys, and more power to you always in my prayers. And I hope we have a great and a happy new year, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Muscat.
Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you for your, your clarification on, on everything. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And Mr. Abdullah, you're always stealing my thunder. Wishing the police and fire, our first responders, all the very best. Please stay safe and, and work safely every day. And hopefully that everyone in the city stays healthy and we can hopefully try to get back to normal sometime next year. God bless everybody.
Next, we have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to wish everyone a happy and blessed holiday season and a happy and healthy twenty twenty-one. The vaccines are out and hopefully we'll get this pandemic behind us and be able to open up commerce and get back to full speed. I was shocked when I heard that our Wayne County Sheriff Benny Napoleon had passed away. He was a robust, healthy man and made me take heed and note that this virus does nothing to take casually. I'm hoping that moving forward, the city council, the administration, everyone can work together and get some things done in twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Next, we have Library McCaffrey. Go ahead, please.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. I just wanted to touch on a couple of items. First off, I wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday season. It's been a long tedious year and I'm looking forward to twenty twenty, turning twenty-one. Second, I want to acknowledge our teen and youth department delivering hundreds of gingerbread kits to families and schools in the Dearborn Heights area. They're extremely popular this year and I wanted to thank them for their efforts. Finally, our home delivery service is up and running. It's going pretty good. A couple use it every day. So if you're interested in having library items delivered, which is something we're going to keep post-pandemic, give us a call through and three seven nine one three eight hundred to request items. Or go to our library catalog and place a hold and give us a call when you get notice it is in. As for in-building services, with some COVID grant money, we're still retrofitting our libraries and furniture to create a more hygiene-friendly environment post-COVID. When this event has subsided, we will be ready to help any who need assistance with economic recovery. So that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library soon.
Next, we have Director Hashem. Can somebody unmute him?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
All right. Madam Chair, I just want to talk a little bit about the homeless prevention program. I just want to let the council and the residents know that it has been a very successful program so far. We have received over sixty applicants. I want to thank Hasan Bazey for fielding all the phone calls and, you know, preparing documentation, accepting the applications. We have processed at least twenty of them this week and that went to the treasury office where we pay people's mortgages, leases and their utilities. So if you have any questions or if you are behind on your mortgage or your utilities, please give us a call. The phone number is three one three seven nine one three five zero zero. Thank you, everyone, and have a great weekend and great holiday. I'm sorry. And see you soon. Thank you.
Next, we have Chief Myers. Chief Meyer, oh, go ahead.
Muted. He's muted. Still muted.
Let's, let's take care of it. Sometimes it's a delay.
No, I'm not touching it. Kathy is doing it and I'm going to. Okay, I'll do, I'll do them this time.
Okay, because, yeah, we had two people doing it. One mutes it and one.
I haven't been doing it. Okay, go ahead. You should be okay.
The llama shirts got him confused. It's okay. I'm good. Do that to people. Actually, what I was saying is I want to thank Tom Roscoe and the Tifa. Christmas came early here at the Justice Center this afternoon. The new marquee went in and is activated. There's a brand-new marquee to serve our citizens here and it's, on behalf of Tom Roscoe and Tifa who helped fund that, the mayor for concurring with it and city council approving the funds. So thank you all. It's a beautiful sign. We just got our training on it today, so those messages will go up there. But please, all the citizens, come and take a look. It's, it's a, it's a good thing that's out there right now. Secondly, on behalf of Fire Chief Brogan, because he doesn't want to talk today, and for the firemen and firewomen, your public servants here, thank you for allowing us to serve you. The citizens, both the police and fire, the men and women are here over the holidays to be with you and your, if you need us. And we'll be working hard during these times and we wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That's on behalf of the Fire Chief and all the members at the Fire Department as well as the Police Department. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Director Hadad.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, everybody. First of all, I wish everybody a happy holidays during these times. Hope everybody's staying safe. Second, I wanted to thank the council, the mayor and Director Hashem for the senior PPE that we will be receiving. I've spoken with our senior coordinators. They're going to come up with some ideas how to distribute that as best and the best way possible. Last week, we had our Zoom with Santa was very successful. We had about fifteen to twenty children Zoom with Santa. It was a great, great program. If I say so myself, Santa looked very good. Santa was very good. So next, I'll get to my notes here. We, on Monday, we had a Christmas in a bag at each one of our senior centers. We had close to four hundred people go through each, both centers combined, about two hundred each center. And we handed out different items in a Christmas bag to all of our seniors. And Santa was at both locations. How? It's the magic of Christmas. That's how he was at both locations at once. It was a great turnout, great program. We were very happy, very proud of that, that situation there. Next thing, we had our holiday lights contest. It happened over the weekend and our winner is Mr. Lou Scott at four nine one three Princess Street in Dearborn Heights, four eight one two five. Beautiful, beautiful home, how he decorated. Went over there today, gave him a, like a certificate saying he's a winner of our, our first one that we've had in a while. And then also a free membership to the Garden Club at English Gardens along with a hundred dollar gift card to English Gardens. Saw his house on the outside and he invited us in and oh my goodness, it was even better on the inside. He had so many Christmas decorations in there. I thought Santa lived there, to be honest with you. It was a great program and everything, so we look forward to doing that again next year. And finally, last week, we, there were some, our last meeting, there was some talk about cross-country skiing at Warren Valley. So I spoke with Eric over at Warren Valley and he sent me a PowerPoint. I'm not going to go through it, but I'm going to send it to all the city council people with the pros and cons of the cross-country skiing over there. Just to be real quick, some of the pros, obviously it's great for the city, something different. New forms of activities for the winter months. The, one of the biggest cons is there, the equipment that we would need for this. The trail groomer estimated at fifty-five thousand dollars just to keep the trails groomed as nicely as possible. And then ski rental and things of that sort. I will send that off to you guys. Eric set up a time, once it snows again, that him and I are going to go out to Kensington Metro Park and see how they do theirs and see what the cost efficiency is for that. So I wanted to let you guys know about that. And again, have a good time and you guys have a great Christmas. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next, we have Treasurer Clayton Hicks Clayton. Is she here? Treasurer Hicks Clayton.
Unmute. Oh, there you are. Okay. I was waiting to be unmuted. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and everyone that's joining us this evening. Real quick, I just want to go over and get in the calendar for the treasurer's office. So we have been open the last two weeks and we're trying to make it very convenient for our residents to come in and pay their winter taxes. And so that is going to continue next week on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, which would be December twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth. We open at nine AM to noon and then the building has to be closed from noon to one to be sanitized and clean. And then we're back open from one to three. And so we want to let folks know, the other thing I want you to know, starting January fourth, those hours are going to be changing and we will be extending that, that three PM I mentioned to four. So it'll be nine to noon and one to four, starting on January fourth into the new year. So one thing I want to share as well is that we are working on an educational outreach component on some of the different opportunities and ways and options to pay your bills, whether, you know, your taxes, your water bills. So we're working on that and you're going to see that coming out very soon, because there are so many options and we do want to try to still keep the foot traffic down. And, and as I believe Councilman, Councilmember Conston mentioned, yes, the vaccination is out there. They're on the first phase, part one of phase one, and they have a second part to phase two, but it's still going to be a few months. And so again, we're trying to keep everybody safe and healthy. So we do need to be aware of keeping that foot traffic and people coming across each other in city hallway. We need to really watch that and be very careful. The last thing I have is just real quick, I don't know if there's an answer this evening, but Honorable Counsel, I sent everyone email explaining a situation that we've been dealing with in the treasurer's office. And also I had emailed the mayor a few times and left voice messages as well. I'm hoping just to get a resolution. I'm not looking to be confrontational whatsoever, just to get the issue resolved. And that issue is the office equipment, the desk and file cabinets that that office desperately needs that was ordered in September. And council did, and I understand the mayor's position, by the way, I will say that, where the council, you know, typically would approve use of those points because of the, the size of that purchase. However, council did approve that and I shared that motion on October twenty-seventh. So that was approved. So I guess at this point, all I'm asking is for some kind of movement to get that item resolved, because right now, if you've been in the office, you can see how outdated things are. Some things are even considered a liability. And plus, not having our, our residents' financial information secured is very concerning. And that equipment is sitting in the basement, which is concerning to me as well. That really doesn't do anyone any good. So that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Treasurer, please let's, I think you may have an answer here. I was trying to stop you so we could get to the answer. Mrs. Lazlo, go ahead, please.
I actually do not have an answer to her. I'm just, I raise my hand to make an announcement. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, well then you're next to make your announcement.
Okay, good evening on everyone. Chrissy Lazlo, Mayor's Office. On Treasurer Hicks did make mention that the, on the hours for the treasurer's office, our hours for City Hall continue to be nine to noon and one to four by appointment only. On any foot traffic that's allowed in to the treasurer's office to pay their taxes will be screened. I'd also like to take an opportunity, as everyone is thanking people, our staff and department heads have worked tirelessly, literally around the clock since March. We have on, been really getting a governor's order and trying to put it into place. On, the, the situation is unprecedented. Any master plan or any emergency plan that we had as a city wasn't to address something. And we're not alone, right? Nobody had anything to address or any playbook to address this. Having said that, our, some of our employees were so good in changing their schedules to reduce the on-foot traffic that they were coming in nights or weekends. On, obviously the department heads were working around the clock. And I'd also think, like to thank the residents who come up and if the governor's orders had changed and they hadn't heard about it. For the most, we're getting a lot of compliance and understanding from the residents. And on, I just asked that they remember when they come up, it's not the people that are screening that are making these rules and it's the CDC and it's for everybody's safety. So Merry Christmas and have a safe and healthy year. Thank you.
Yeah, just to speak about what Lisa Hicks Clayton, our treasurer, had to say. I'm going to ask the mayor if he could kindly get that done for us. It's not just for us, it's for everyone. And the money was already spent. Let's put it together. I, I hope it doesn't come down to we have a resolution and, and the council has to vote on it to get it done. I just think it should get done. And in the spirit of the holidays, I'm asking Mr. Mayor to kindly get that done. Thank you.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
I was going to give a call to the treasurer on Monday and Tuesday. Unfortunately, I had a family member that had a medical emergency and that took most of today and a good portion of Monday, which was also my birthday. And I was kind of shocked when the emergency came up, but I've had to deal with it. The reason the equipment is in the basement is because I took this matter to a police agency and they indicated to me that I should confiscate the unopened furniture because it's evidence. I will make contact with the investigator and see if it can get released.
Thank you. And I'm sorry about your family member and hopefully everything will work out.
Okay, at this time, is there any more announcements for the public? I will have clerk, Madam Clerk, read the rules for our public comment section. Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Okay, the procedure for addressing the council during the comment section of public comments shall be as follows. Any member of the public who wants to address the council shall begin doing so by stating his or her name, the street he's, he or she lives on, and the municipality in which here she resides. He shall have up to three minutes to address council. Okay. I have, um, Charles Black. Well, I'm going, oh, shoot, I'm sorry. I lost you. Could you raise your hand again? I should unmute you first. Thank you. Sorry, what, no picture. You go to the end of the line. Okay, go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
Blackwell, Detroit, Michigan resident. I wanted to first state that it has come to my attention that there are several members of this public body that has a problem with me. I want to state that just about every member of this public body has either my cellphone number or my email to contact me if they have a problem with anything. And you are freely welcome to contact me at any time to discuss any problem that you might have at any time. Call me, email. Second thing that I wanted to state is about the Corporation Council status. Councilman Abdullah mentioned that he wants the mayor to bring forth several names. But again, the charter states that the Corporation Council must be a resident of Dearborn Heights. It's going to be very difficult for the mayor or whoever to go out and find several attorneys who know municipal law, who is also a Dearborn Heights resident. So I think the city is going to have a hard time, you know, finding some big pool of applicants to fill the role of the Corporation Council. The other thing that I wanted to ask Chief Myers is the council chair stated that, you know, she received threats in emails and text messages to save me from filing a FOIA request. I want to know could the? Um, I want to know, could the Chief Myers speak about, has any police report been filed about any threats being sent to the council chair? Thank you.
All right, next we have Najah Janoon.
I'm trying to find. Hold on a minute. Okay, go ahead, please.
Hi, Madam Chair. I'm Najah Janoon, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, on Whitefield Street. Um, just wanted to say, you know, Madam Chair is a longtime uh, citizen of Dearborn Heights. I just wanna say thank you for everything you do. Um, I know politics are not always easy, but you do a wonderful job of running the city council meetings and, you know, you show respect for everyone, even when it might be hard to do so. Um, I'd also like to wish Mayor Pletko a happy belated birthday. And um, just wanna say happy holidays to everybody, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Um, thanks, everyone.
Very much. Next, we have iPhone. Can we, can we unmute the iPhone?
Hello?
Hello. We need your name, city, county, state, in three minutes.
Uh, Sam, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Actually, I have already requested additional time, so I'll try to make it as quick as possible. Through the chair, first of all, would like to ask the clerk a couple of questions if she would like to answer them, please. Clerk?
What was that?
Through the chair, I was trying to ask you a couple of questions if you wanna answer them, please.
Through me? That would be up to the chair. Go ahead.
Do you have on record all council member and elected official legal names as they were supposed to be properly registered based on state records?
I would have to check that for you. I don't know that offhand. I'm sure they are here, legal names. They would have had to do get to um, uh, run, but for their petition, but I would have, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay. Would you like me to submit your FOIA request for that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Is that it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Second, uh, I have a question for Mayor Pletko.
Okay.
Mr. Pletko, you, Mr. Pletko, first of all, thank you so much for your cooperation and giving me uh, all the backup that I've requested from you for the status of the audit. But please, before I move on, I would like you to stop me or have Corporation Council stop me if there's any liability, any question I'm gonna ask you. There was some information that was submitted from you to me that you've been pretty cooperative with a couple people from the Raymond Group. However, there's an exhibit where it stated that Council Chair, she's technically the middle person to bring information forward from Plant Moran to them and Christina Lazlo in exhibit number two, to bring any information from the Assessor's Office for the auditors. Is that correct?
Yeah, the auditors got a legal opinion, this was Plant Moran, that they could not provide some of the exhibits directly to the auditors that the uh, council has the audit done, but that they would be able to provide the information to the Council Chair and she could provide it to uh, the auditors. And so that was what they indicated.
So who's delaying the audit right now? Cuz the fingers were pointed against you and it seems like you're doing what you're supposed to and somebody else is not making the audit move forward.
Yeah, I think we've cooperated fully in every way, shape and fashion and I sent you the information where the Raymond uh, people uh, complimented us on the information and there's been a cordial exchange for all the questions, so.
I see it. I read it and I, once again, I appreciate you. Madam Chair, to be honest with you, based on the emails and the information I've received from the mayors, it appears that you've been delaying the forensic audit. And unfortunately, there's a budget that's been set forward for the audit. And we as a taxpayer have to repay for that and technically are draining that, that budget. And again, we as a taxpayer have to pay that. Do you have any response for that?
Question for?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, who's the question for?
It's for you.
Okay, let me explain something. I have been in touch with the Raymond Group. I was given a portal through um, Plant Moran. It is not working for me. Um, I have a email as of today that Plant Moran, they sent a couple of credit card statements to accounts, one for a card held by the Chief of Police and the other by the Treasurer. They were told that the mayor and no one else in the city has a credit card.
When was that, when was that email submitted, you said?
I just got it today.
There was an email that was sent by the mayor back in September thirteen, giving them all the information regarding the credit cards.
Let me explain one more thing. This is in litigation right now and at this time I will not be commenting any further. I didn't.
We, we, we as a taxpayer, we as a.
Sorry, but it's a verification, point of order, please. When it's in litigation, I'm not commenting on it. It's in the court system. If you wanna follow it online, feel happy to do so, but I will not be commenting. I did discuss this.
That's another, that's another excuse from you for delaying and draining our budget. You just wasting our money and you're just wasting the time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet.
Okay, well, you have exactly twenty-five seconds. Go ahead, please.
My five minutes are not up yet.
You're not getting five minutes, you get three and that's it.
Well, I already requested ahead of time, if I was attacking somebody else, you would have gave me extra time, as plenty of time as I wanted, but see, these points are against you because you're draining our city budget and wasting our time. You don't wanna hear it. Last item for tonight, you made some accusation.
Okay, sir, your three, three minutes are up. We will move on. Next we have Gary Miyaki. Let me unmute you. Go ahead, please. Yes.
Okay, Gary Miyaki, Plainfield Street, Dearborn Heights. Uh, I just wanted to correct some points uh, that were raised in some discussion of uh, certain legal bills. The city has continued to be legally protected. Uh, the other city lawyers and I have been continuing to provide legal services for the city. For example, uh, as you may recall, I attended the special meeting on November twenty-seventh and even made sure that an appropriate motion was adopted, although I was not recognized uh, for the purpose and had to wait until public comment to make sure that the council uh, handled things correctly. I have been doing these things despite the fact that I have not been paid since July of twenty-twenty. Um, and I have been doing these things even though the city administration has provided my invoices for inclusion on the agenda. By noting these things, I just wanted to clarify that the city has continued to be legally protected. I am not, however, saying that this can or will continue indefinitely into the future. Thank you.
We have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, that was a mistake. Sorry, uh, Council Chair.
Okay, um, next we have Moby Doom. Me.
Hello, hello, how are you guys? Can you hear me? Hey, I just wanted to come in, just say thank you to all of you guys. Uh, dread on the holidays. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Years. Uh, thank you to the council. Happy belated birthday to the mayor. Real sorry about your old family member. I hope your family member becomes to start doing better. And to this great council, I just want you guys all keep in mind, I just recently opened up Clover Mortgage right on Ford Road in the city of Dearborn Heights. Uh, doors are officially open now. If anybody's looking to refinance or to look into purchase a home, you can send us our way. We can send you the best rates on what's going on in the given market. Uh, with that being said, I just wanna go and thank everybody and have everybody have a blessed week. And we'll see you guys at the next meeting. I'll yield the rest of my time, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Leslie Winless. I'm going to unmute you. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, my name's Leslie Winless. I live at two-three-four-six-nine Annapolis Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, four-eight-one-two-five Wayne County. Um, I just had a couple, or one shout out. I, I don't know if everybody got to see it this morning on the Kelly and Ryan Show. Um, our Dearborn Heights resident Kenneth Isaacson was um, spotlighted on their show for his Kid Santa project, so I just wanted to shed light on there uh, on, about that in a public forum. I thought he did really good and I thought he represented the city well. Um, the city charter was brought up tonight and I just, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure what the process is for that, but, or if you guys are appointing, I can't, I'm hearing feedback, sorry. But um, if you guys are appointing uh, residents to look at the city charter, um, or if there's an application or interview process, if the residents could get that information, cuz I'm very interested in helping with the revisions of the city charter. Um, the other thing I was looking for is the update on the implicit bias training. I think it was approved back in July um, for all of the employees in the city. And I was trying to get an update as far as how's that going? How many people have got it done? Um, has it even started yet? Another thing I wanted clarification on is a list on the website for the police department of where we can find a list of the trainings and maybe um, upload recommendations. And then I had a suggestion for the city council meetings. When you guys do the closed sessions, you can use the breakout room feature on Zoom, so you don't have to put all of the people in the waiting room and that's how you accidentally kick people out. It's easier if you just do a breakout room and move the city council people. That was just a pet peeve. I had to throw it out there. Um, I also wanted to say um, continued support for Moby Doom and then uh, for city council in January when you guys go to revote. And then happy holidays to everybody and Happy New Year to you guys in twenty-twenty-one. Oh, I yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thanks. Um, next we have, In God We Trust. Let me unmute you. Go ahead. You have three minutes. State your name, address, city, state, county. I can't see them anymore, Council Chair. Um, In God We Trust, can you raise your hand again, please? And then it'll bring you to the front. Oh, I see, I, I see them now. Okay. I just asked to unmute, but nothing. Right here. I asked unmute three times.
He's still muted.
Yeah. I'm muting. Okay, they're coming, but let me do it, Lynn, okay?
Okay.
There you go. Go ahead, please.
Sir. Wait, county. You violated my freedom of speech. Last time when I sued you and you got served, you went crying to some.
I'm sorry, but you've already had time to speak. Nancy Brier, go ahead, please.
All right, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, although I'm disappointed that I didn't go further, I, I do believe that I've been very involved in the city. And I also think we should replace Lisa with another woman. It seems that this is not the time for me. And what I'd like to say is we need someone who has practical experience, keeps excellent records, attends city council meetings, does research and cares a great deal about our city, a person that is aware of what our city has been going through and is willing to make it right. Therefore, I am removing myself from consideration at this time and will let the residents decide if they want me to serve in the future. In my mind, this person has, has the additional experience of serving as Treasurer of the city and is prepared to take the next step to serve on city council and I recommend Mr. Abdul-Hak. Thank you.
Comments from the audience before we move to adjourn? Okay. Vince, go ahead, please. You have three minutes. We need your name, street, county and state.
Can I say one more after that?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Vince Strzokowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. Um, first of all, happy holidays to everybody and Happy New Year. Um, and a shout out to all our uh, city employees. You guys do a great job throughout the year and thank you for everything you've done. My question this evening is for the uh, Chief of Police um, regarding the nine eleven consolidation. It's been some time since we've heard any updates. I would like to know if there's anything available regarding that. Uh, we were supposed to have um, uh, like a town hall meeting regarding the situation and I was wondering if there was any progress on that or is that gonna be delayed? Um, any further. Thank you.
Sure, um, I would, uh, if I were to say what was in the best interest for our city, we would have been at the Consolidated Dispatch about four months ago. Dearborn City Council and their uh, administration is working on contract language between, a few things between our lawyers and their lawyers to come up with the contract language that both will agree on. Um, I can't speak for uh, their city, but I do know in the very near future, they're having a study session about it. As soon as I get the contract, I will be presenting it to city council for review and approval with my recommendation that we continue with the Consolidated Dispatch and join the Dearborn United uh, dispatch as soon as possible.
Is there gonna, is there gonna be a um, an informational meeting from them for the citizens?
That's completely up to city council. I'll be presenting a contract for their approval.
Okay, thank you. Have a great holiday, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move to adjourn? Councilman?
Uh, just one quick note, um, everybody thanks the police and fire, but we forget, always forget about uh, our DPW who keeps our services going, uh, fixes water main, breaks out in the cold and in the mud and uh, takes pretty doggone good care of us. So I just wanna reach out to them before we have anything else.
Do I hear?
Move, move to adjourn.
Wait, Madam Chair, there's, there are the hawk waving.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please. Whoops. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I have the hawk, three-five-four, Rosemary. First, I wanna wish the mayor happy birthday. It was yesterday. Second, I wanna wish all our residents happy holidays and Merry Christmas. And I want just to say to Nancy Brier, because of great people like you, Nancy, I have decided to run next to you to city council next year. And thank you very much.
Muscat?
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, or I'm sorry, Councilman Abdullah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Love's opposed. My, meeting is adjourned.